Good morning. Welcome to our June 10th Board Work Session for the Paulding County Board of Education. I would like to call this meeting to order and begin by asking Mr. Mike Faulkner from Northview Baptist Church to come and to the podium and lead us in our invocation and our pledge, if you don't mind.
Oh my God, we thank you for the privilege of living in a community and a nation that gives us freedoms to express our opinions and to express our faith. We pray, God, that you would give guidance to every discussion, every decision that may be made today on a personal level as well as on a community level. May you help us, Father, to hear your voice and to respond in ways that reflect the character that is ours in Christ, for it's in his name I pray. Amen. Join together and say in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first things, we need to, I need a motion to adopt our proposed agenda for this meeting.
It's a move.
So moved by Mr. Nolan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fuller. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the proposed agenda? Ms. Lyons? That is unanimous? All right, now we need to, I need a motion to approve our minutes from our May 27th Board Meeting.
It's a move.
Motion moved by Mr. Nolan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fuller. Mr. Clayton, you're awfully quiet over there. Is there any discussion on the? I usually hear you. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the regular session minutes from May 27? Ms. Lyons? Approval? Thank you. It is unanimous. Excuse me, at this time, I would like to turn our meeting over to our superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Well, good morning, everyone. We are going to kick off today's Board Meeting with a recognition, and I'm going to ask Janice DeGaulle to come up, and we're going to spend a few minutes appreciating Carroll EMC. And so thank you all for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So excited to be here for our junior partner in education recognition. And today, we're recognizing Carroll EMC for their contributions and support of our district. I'm happy to welcome Mr. Tim Martin, who is President and CEO of Carroll EMC, and just want to say thank you for being here and all that you do. Through their Together We Serve program, they participate in career fairs at Paulding County High School and South Paulding High School. They also annually give Extending Hope scholarships to students at both of those high schools. A corporate sponsorship is also given each year to the Paulding Education Foundation, which we know in turn goes right back into all of our classrooms. It goes into grants, it goes into scholarships, in all the ways that support our district. They are also incredibly involved with our Paulding College and Career Academy, the Energy Limon Program there. They actually built our outdoor training lab when PCC opened a few years ago and have provided ongoing training, both to our instructor and to our students. They help us with equipment needs. Pretty much anything we ask for, they are always there. They also take three summer interns from that program each year. So these are students who've gone through the program, and they're able to get real-life work experience working with Carroll EMC for the summer. They have frequently also helped those students get jobs with their contractors and helped them get their career started in the energy industry. Matt Jones, who is manager of system design, is also, he's an active member of both the District CTAE Advisory Board and the PCCA Energy Pathway Advisory Board. So as you can see, Carroll EMC is committed to supporting our students in so many different ways, and we appreciate everything that they do. So thank you so much. And I understand Mr. Martin has a special presentation that he would like to make this morning, so I'm going to turn it over to you for that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And we are, it's an honor to be with you today. We are proud to partner with Paulding County Schools in so many ways. For those that don't know, I guess you know that we serve the western part of Paulding County and that we love our members in Paulding County, including, well, I don't know if, you're not a member, but a former employee, Adam Clayton, who we hailed as C-Lee, but has found his calling and doing a great job. Not only serving, because you started serving on the school board, I think, when you were at Carroll. So, but, you know, we take it very seriously. I'm going to read a letter. It's on behalf of our board. We want to make a donation to support school safety initiatives with Paulding County Schools. I know you take it very seriously. I saw your safety officers out here and as well as the security of the facility. So, and it's unfortunate that we have to focus on that, but I think it is the real world today. So let me just read this letter. It says, Dear Mr. Barnett and Paulding County School Board Members, on behalf of the Carroll EMC Board Directors, it's our honor to present a donation of $30,000 to Paulding County Schools to be used in support of school safety initiatives across the district. This contribution is expression of one of the foundational principles of electric cooperative model, concern for community. As a member-owned cooperative, Carroll EMC is committed to serving not just the energy needs of our members, but the broader well-being of the communities we call home. Our board recognizes that the safety and security of students, faculty, and staff are vital to the success and sustainability of our region. The donation also reflects two of Carroll EMC's core values, safety and caring. Safety has always been our top priority, not only in our operations, but in the community at large. We also believe in caring deeply for those around us, especially our children, who represent the future of our community. We're honored to partner with Paulding County Schools in a shared mission to provide a safe, nurturing, and empowering environment for all students. It is our hope that this donation will contribute meaningfully to that mission and support any measures deemed necessary to enhance the safety infrastructure and preparedness across your schools. Thank you for your continued commitment to preparing all Paulding County School students for success today and tomorrow. Carroll EMC is proud to support your efforts.
Thank you.
We have our Partner in Education sign that you can proudly display.
We will proudly display this, yes.
That you are a partner in education, and I think we're going to get a picture back for it.
Okay.
With the four members, thank you so much. I appreciate you.
If we had a good lawyer, you could probably argue that Carroll EMC is the reason I'm on the board. They said leadership, Paulding, and Freeside. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate you. You know the sign or the check or?
I've slept since then.
Well, I know Mr. Martin's had to head out, but just want to thank him again on the record and his board for supporting the school district with such a sizable donation. And Ms. Colette's correct, that will ultimately wind up with Mike Rupel and his budget. Anna will make sure that happens, and we'll use the money wisely, I assure you. And so, Madam Chair, we'll move on, I guess, in the superintendent's report, which the only other, only a couple more items in here, but we do need to talk about for a minute our monthly financial update. And I believe Ms. Anna Durham, our CFO, is going to come up to the podium and give us a few highlights from the monthly financial update for the month of April.
Yes. Good morning. I'd just like to go over a few highlights this morning for our April financial update. And then with 83.3% of the fiscal year, 25 budget year elapsed, you'll see in the top graph, the percentage of variance of year-to-date revenue to budget is the 5.7%, with prior year being 5.6% and our three-year average of a 3.9%. In the lower graph, you'll see the percentage of variance of year-to-date expenditures to budget. It's currently that for April was 2.3%, with prior year being 2.9% and our three-year average of 3.2%. And then our unassigned fund balance could support 2.4 months of our fiscal year 25 budget expenditures, which was the same as last time at this time, as last year at this time. This financial update is attached to today's meeting agenda and is available on our website as well. Our monthly update also includes a statement of revenues and expenditures and encumbrances. And then our next full quarterly report will be in August for the fourth quarter of fiscal year '25. Thank you.
So yeah, this is on our website. It's a lot more. Yep, than what we presented this morning. Those are just a few highlights, but it is out there available for the public and anyone to take a look at. Did have one more thing I wanted to mention in the superintendent's report. And that is to, you're going to notice that Anna's carrying an extra weight this meeting with procurement items, and that is because Cole Crowder, our Director of Procurement, has welcomed another son to his family. So just wanted to share that with you and introduce you to Colton. So mom and baby are doing, are doing great, so celebrate with him on that. And so with that, Madam Chair, we'll move into our presentations for this morning. And we're going to start with our FY 2026 budget presentation. And for that, I'll ask again Ms. Thesma to come forward.
All right. We've made it to the final for our budget.
Yep.
So that we will be presenting our original budget this morning, and we also will include an updated overview flyer that will be posted on the website. Looking first at enrollment, no changes have occurred since our tentative budget presentation. We are still projected to educate 31,075 students for FY '26. This in turn goes into our allotments. There's no changes with, from our tentative budget. We still have a net decrease of 99 allotments in FY '26. And then again, looking at this chart, you'll notice that 63% of our allotments are for instruction, and again, no changes from the tentative. Moving into our general fund revenue, no material changes have occurred. We're still projected to collect $435.7 million. And we have created a zero-based budget with our revenue for our expenditures, and again, no material changes have occurred since the tentative. This is one final look at our overview for the original budget. The general fund is our largest fund at a total of $438.5 million. That includes the $435.7 in the previous slide, as well as $2.8 million in grants. Again, the general fund budget has no changes, and we are ending with a fund balance that is projected to be 1.5 months of our FY '26 expenditures. And then moving into our four remaining categories, no material changes have occurred. We will also pay $15.9 million in bond debt for FY '26. This includes our refunded 2025 bonds and our 2020 and 2025 SPOs bonds. And we also did want to mention again in this meeting that we do have a video out on our website that Jay Dillon and the Communications Department has put together that provides an understanding of how we develop the budget and the unique challenges that we face. And this video can be found on our main webpage. Thank you.
Ms. Thesma, thank you, Ms. Thesma, for carrying double duty today. I did want to mention, I don't know if y'all picked up on that, but when you were looking at that first governmental fund type slide there, and Ms. Thesma mentioned it, that we will have one and a half months' worth of reserve in fund balance at June 30th. That's the projection for the budget, which is always our target. But you might have missed there at the bottom, we also reference our, sort of our target max is about 15% of our budget. Our minimum is the one and a half months. And so we are essentially a whole lot closer to the minimum, is what I'm getting at. We're less than a million dollars from the absolute minimum. We're probably $12 million away from our maximum. And that's what, just wanted again, we talk about it all the time, but just to remind folks, we, we keep it, we run it as tight as possible. And one and a half months in June means by September, we're squeaking by, by just a matter of days. The idea that we have, we're hoarding away a fund balance unfortunately is not accurate. It'd be nice, but not accurate in our case. So again, thank you, Ms. Thesma, for, not just for today, but seriously for all the work. All those, all that, that development calendar we've been showing now for months, I mean, that was, represents a lot of work on yours and the entire team and Ms. Durham as well. So thank you, guys. I really appreciate all, all the work. And so, yeah, I'm going to ask Ms. Durham to come back forward. Again, she's our CFO and filling in for our procurement director this morning, and she has five items that will appear on a consent agenda at the next board meeting.
Yeah, I've got five items this morning for you for presentation. The first is a renewal of our invitation for bid for waste removal services, which is IFB 22-220311. This contract was originally awarded to GFL Environmental for the initial one-year term that began in July of 2022. This solicitation was bid with five potential one-year options for renewal with proven quality, performance, and price. This will be the third option of renewal. Our second item is a renewal of our request for proposal for WAN and internet services, RFP 21-200216. This contract was originally awarded to Comcast Business for the initial five-year term that began July of 2021. This recommendation will allow us to continue with our contract through June 30th of 2026. The third item is a renewal of invitation for bid. Thank you. The third item is the renewal of invitation for bid for fencing and gate replacement and installation. That's IFB 22-220614. This contract was originally awarded to L&amp;L Fence and Fabrication, Inc. for the initial one-year term that began July of 2022. This solicitation was bid with three potential one-year options for renewal with proven quality, performance, and price, and this will be the third option of renewal. And then? Number four is our renewal of invitation for bid for network equipment and maintenance. This is IFB 24-231212. This contract was originally awarded to PC Solutions and Integration LLC for the initial one-year term that began July of 2024. This solicitation was bid with five potential one-year options for renewal with proven quality, performance, and price, and this will be the first option of renewal. And then our final item is the renewal of invitation for bid for network components and recabling, which is IFB 24-240202. This contract was originally awarded to AIOS Group for the initial one-year term that began in July of '24. This solicitation was bid with three potential one-year options for renewal with proven quality, performance, and price, and this will be the first option of renewal. And then if you have any questions or concerns over these projects, they can be sent to us between now and the June 24th meeting, where they'll be placed on the agenda for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
All right, at this time, we are to adjourn to executive session, where we will discuss personnel, land, and legal. No votes will be taken except for to approve our executive session minutes. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, point of order.
Yes, sir.
I don't normally like to amend, propose amendments to the agenda in the middle of the agenda. But I believe we have two that are scheduled to speak today. I would like to propose and make a motion that we go ahead and knock public speaking out right now before we go into executive session. That way they can go about their business today. And just amend that and move that to this point of the meeting. I'll make that motion. I mean.
All right, so we have a motion to amend the agenda to move public speaking prior to executive session. And we have a second by Ms. Lyons. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the amendment to our agenda. And it is unanimous. So, at this point in time, I'm good to go with our public speakers. And I have, sorry. I have Ms. Shannon Price here to speak about Mulberry Rock. If you'll come to the podium, and Mr. Cable will give instructions.
Ms. Price, same, same instructions. I'll keep time. Five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know. You've got about a minute left.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank y'all for having me this morning. First off, I would just like to, again, am I, I'm not sure if I can ask questions, but I'm going to ask a question. I'd like to know about the 10-acre contract that's on Mulberry Rock Road. I'm not sure if that's still in play or not in play. But I know, I mean, that's a big concern for everybody, whether or not that that contract is going to go through. The second thing that I would like to inquire about is there's 200 acres for sale on Mulberry Rock Road. And I did some checking about the schools at North Paulding and at South Paulding. And it appears that because those two schools have, you know, the elementary school or, in a high school or middle school in a high school, that the, that at South, there's 143 acres with those two combined. And at North, about 127 acres combined. So if you were to put a new high school and the combination of the two elementary schools, New Georgia and Union, like you were planning to do, and you were to take the 53 acres plus that 10 acres that you were going to purchase which would be 63 acres, and you add those together, you're looking at about, you know, 107, 80 acres right there. So you're, you'd have a little bit more than the 200 that you needed. But if you built the school a little bit bigger for all the population that's coming out around the south end area with the 400 houses that are about to be built on Cole Lake Road and the other things that are happening out in the south end with the, all the houses that are being built around Nebo, that would probably help you with a lot of growth. So I was just thinking, maybe if y'all thought about that, and then if you thought about, well, you could sell the property at New Georgia, because you wouldn't need that anymore, and all the industrial growth that's going out there. You could sell that property, you could sell your Union property. Then you could sell your Matthews property to the county. We know that's over, worth over a million dollars. Why not do all that, put that into paying off some of that property? I think that's a pretty good thought process, instead of taking Mulberry Rock Park. I think that's a pretty good thought process, instead of taking Mulberry Rock Park from what it's supposed to be used for, which is a park. So, that's just my thoughts, and there's so much opposition about taking that, swapping that land. I hope that y'all are really, really going to think about that and consider not taking or not making a swap for that, because the county's saying that they're putting it on y'all for wanting the swap. Y'all are saying that they're wanting the swap. So, I hope that y'all really, really consider what the people in the south end of the district want and don't choose that option. So, that was just my thoughts, and we on the south side sure would like it if we kept it a park. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Shane Miller again to talk about the land swap.
Five minutes, Mr. Cable.
Five minutes. I'll let you know when you get to four, and if they...
I don't think I'm going to require all five.
Well, if they ask you any questions, I'll stop the clock.
All right. Good morning, Board. As many of you know, I'm here to talk about the land swap deal this morning. You have heard so many negative comments that I felt it embarrassed to, for me to come in and speak to you about the majority of the population in South Paulding. As many of you know, I've been a political activist for the last five years, and I have been communicating with South Paulding residents all across South Paulding consistently, not only about this deal, but about politics, politicians, upcoming election cycles, and we're very well informed what the majority of the South Paulding residents want. Now, you have heard over the last few months, a bunch of naysayers and that kind of thing. There was a town hall about it where people were up in arms. But of course, as you know, you've been sitting here long enough, the people who are going to speak negatively about something are going to come out of the woodwork. The people who are positive are usually just going to sit back and remain quiet. Well, at this point, we can no longer remain quiet. The majority of South Paulding residents do not care if you put a school on that park land. They wouldn't mind if you closed the park down, because in the big picture of things, the common sense voters of Paulding County understand the dire situation that we're in. We've seen the numbers on the board this morning, 31,025 students that we will be educating this year. Think about that for just a second in a school system that was built to handle 28,000 students. Let that sink in for just a second. I love parks. I think they're great, but we already have a bunch of parks in Paulding County. We already have a bunch. They're 15 minutes from anywhere in Paulding County. Beautiful parks. Why do we need this extra 160 or an extra 52 acres in a park on land that can't be, it would take so much money to put walking trails in there that we could probably build a school for what it would cost us to put the walking trails in. At this point right here, the majority of South Paulding residents are in favor of this land swap, primarily because it's the most conservative thing to do for the county. One, we're swapping land. We're not taking money out of taxpayers' pockets. That's a good thing right there. Two, this does not inflict a millage rate increase from the Board of Education. As we all know, this board right here hates to raise the millage rate. Okay? It raises no taxes in the county from the commission. It is all beneficial all the way around. We have to stop looking at what individuals want, and we need to look at the big picture, what is best for Paulding County students, and what's best for Paulding County students right now is a new building that doesn't cost the county anything. I think the majority of the people in the county would agree with that. I've spoken to a little over 1,000 people on this matter, and the only negative I've heard is that at a town hall that was sponsored by the commission. Just wanted to give y'all some positive updates on that, remind y'all that the minority should not control the majority. The majority of South Paulding residents and the majority of the county itself understands the necessity of new school buildings. When you line that up with, between a new school building or a walking trail for a park, I think y'all will make the right decision and carry through with the land swap. I appreciate y'all's time this morning. Y'all have a blessed afternoon.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Make a motion to go to executive session.
Motion by Mr. Nolan to go to executive session. Mr. Clayton did a second.
I'm sorry. Again, we are going to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel, land, and legal. No votes will be taken except to approve our executive session minutes. All in favor of our motion to adjourn? It is unanimous. We are adjourned.[936.32]
Good morning again. We are reconvening back to regular session. We have been in executive session where no votes were taken except for approval of our executive session minutes and all we discussed was land legal and personnel. At this time, I would like to turn this meeting over to our superintendent for the action items.
Madam Chair, I have two items this morning. The first is I request approval of the FY 2026 original budget as presented this morning.
Do we have a motion to approve the 2026 original budget?
I will make that motion.
Ms. Lyons did the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chester. When it comes to any discussion, I would like to make sure that everyone is aware that this is approval of the budget. This is not approval of the militrate. That will be just voted on in another meeting. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of our 2026 original budget. It is unanimous.
And Madam Chair, I request approval of the personnel report as presented this morning including items one through seventy-nine.
Hearing the superintendent's recommendation of the personnel report, items one through seventy-nine, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Lyons.
Second.
Second by everybody. Mr. Clayton heard you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of personnel items is unanimous. We moved our public participation to before our executive session. So now it's board member comments and we start with Mr. Chester today. You get to go first.
I don't have any today. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Lyons, microphone.
All I want to say is the conference in Savannah was phenomenal. We got a lot of great information and a lot of things to think about over the next school year and I hope everybody has a great day and that's all I have. Mr. Nolan.
I think everybody that is in the business of school administration should sit through a Phil Hartley presentation at some point in their career. They'll be better for it but man, that guy is, when he decides to hang it up for sure, it's going to be a bad day for the schools of Georgia. He is a fantastic presenter, so.
I wanted to again say thank you to Carol EMC for their very generous gift for safety and security for Paulding County schools. We, as board members, appreciate that and our citizens, our students, everyone will greatly appreciate Carol EMC and their donation. I also would like to reiterate that the training that we received, the, just the amount of knowledge that we were able to pack into our brains over the, technically, I guess, two days, was great information. A lot of stuff that, I liked the breakout sessions as well. We all attended different ones so that we could kind of come together and each of us learned something from what they had to offer. So I just wanted to say it was great to have that opportunity to go and I appreciate the opportunity to serve and the opportunity to learn as well.
I'll just reiterate what everybody's kind of said. I had a great time in Savannah at the conference, learned a lot of stuff, made some great connections, was able to talk to other school board members from across the state and kind of pick their brains a little bit about ideas and things that we've kind of discussed here and how they're implementing them and still kind of continue discussion how we can look at making some changes or implementing other good ideas if they'll work for Paulding or not because not every district is the same. So just because it works for one district, it probably, you know, it may not work for us, so we've got to talk through some of that stuff. Thank you to Carol EMC. Like Tim said, I worked there when I first got on the board. You could probably argue they're the reason I'm on the board or at least one of the factors because they sent me through Leadership Paulding with our chamber where I met Ms. Lyons and then it kind of all just went from there. So it's great to have them as a partner even though they only have a very small portion of our county and our district, but they still are one of our biggest supporters and we really appreciate them.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Nolan, second by Mr. Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to adjourn. It is unanimous. We are adjourned.